Hey, Michael.
Yes?
That's the latest and greatest.
Okay.
The sighting of the building changed.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the planning board, February 18th. It is 7:00 PM. We have a continuation of a public hearing.
Two of them.
We have, oh, two.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, we do. As only our kind of country was here, we have two. And we're also going to have a discussion with a new application tonight. I'm just change these around a little bit. We're going to go with the public hearings first. We have a public hearing for 46 Church Street. Is anyone here to speak to that? 46 Church Street?
41.
41, it's going to us. Can I get a motion in to continue the public hearing until our next meeting in March?
Continue the public hearing until March.
Will it be seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll put that down as the shortest public hearing we've had in a long time. Public hearing regarding town and country. You got a comment to speak to us?
No.
We were here to hear back from you.
Sorry, from there.
I didn't hear what you said.
Is there anything new?
Nothing new.
Nothing new?
We wanted to hear from you.
Did we get this big?
The county didn't meet.
They did not meet on it, right?
Yeah.
They went to the county, the county didn't meet on it yet, right?
Right, they didn't meet on it.
I understand.
They didn't meet in March.
So we're still waiting back from county?
What?
We're waiting back from a word from the county yet, aren't we, still?
Can you move with this part of it and then wait their decision?
Can you approve the subject, too?
No.
No, but, I mean, there was bad luck of the weather.
It's quite a slow time, huh?
So they didn't meet.
Yeah. How did we find out about that beforehand, before we come to a meeting?
We'd call the secretary.
Call Brogan?
Since, basically, since the public hearing was all set to go, it was publicized, it was, the notices were sent out by the applicant. Everything was all set to go, except the planning board canceled their meeting due to the weather. So, we can still have the public hearing during this meeting, but no motion can be taken until the March meeting. So we'll have to continue the public hearing. So we can still discuss it.
The March meeting will be another part of the public hearing?
Yeah, it's just going to be...
We're going to continue the public hearing. I'm going to ask for a motion for that right now. We're going to continue the public hearing.
Remember our proposal, right?
Yeah.
Well, we just wanted to rebuild the decks for the decision.
Yep.
So...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And, this is really for information, because we're obviously very anxious to comply in every possible way. And, we were slightly taken by surprise by the complexity of the process. And, obviously, we're answerable to all our residents. So I would like to know a source, or maybe even from you, of the information, on what it is that has triggered the exact process that we're going through.
It changed the footprint from the original site plan.
We changed the footprint.
Right.
So...
As small as it may be, there's no such thing as a little bit pregnant. It's a little bit changed. I haven't heard any controversy raised so far. But, the process is, it comes back from county, with county taking a look at it, giving us some input. We take their input before we take any action. So...
How would be able to find any original drawing to know what the original footprint
I don't know if I got the question. Go ahead.
Have we found any original drawing to know what the original footprint was? Do we have any original drawings of the existing?
Yeah, that would probably be in the street file.
I would think it would be in the street file.
So the building, the building department should be able to help you with that.
However, we don't know if there's any change of, or what they are now.
Right, so the decision descended to the planning board was made by the building department for that reason. They must have aired your proposed plans with the original, determined that it's a site plan change, as Rich said, albeit...
Your original construction was a can of lever type of construction, and now you've gone to a pole structure. It's a very minor change, but it does trigger a review of the site plan. But like I say, I haven't heard any controversy raised, and I think you...
So, maybe this is the problem, but unless, oh, if the county passes, can I have any questions you're going to ask from us, or will we be approved?
I gotta license this man up and give him a job. I can't answer that until we get something back from the county.
Because, well, my question is...
All you can do is read the smile on my face.
More material. We don't have to come up with more material, more evidence, or anything.
I can't tell till the county reacts to your proposal. I can tell you from past experience with the county, I'm not expecting them to come back with much. But that's only based on past experience.
If there's any questions that you have, you let us know about them before the day, the night of the meeting, so we can bring an answer?
Yes.
Yes.
As soon as we hear from county...
As soon as we hear from county, we'll inform whoever the contact person is.
Yeah, one way or the other, you'll get information right after we do, from the county, you'll know. So...
I'm sorry I had to face the weather, but we enjoyed your company. I need a motion to continue the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you on the first Tuesday in March.
Were there not public comments?
There were no public comments. There weren't any public comments.
There were?
No.
Would you like to enter a public comment?
I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
I'm sorry I didn't late, and I missed.
That's okay. We'll allow it. We're very informative.
My name is Ray Kern, owner at the condominium, as are all of these folks here. And we're here to make the board aware of the fact that this action that is being, that's before you, as far as we are concerned, is actually an illegal action, in the sense that it violates our bylaws. And, we are asking you for that reason. I'll read you the section which it violates. Bylaws, as you know, are based on state statutes approved by the state for condominiums. So, to what extent that affects or influences your ability, I don't even know. Whether your capacity to pass judgment is affected by the violation of the state statute or not, that's something that your lawyer would have to explore. I myself, having been chair of this board for a number of years, don't know the answer to that. But I'm just here to, we are here to point out that we are not happy with this proposal for that reason. And, the violation that we believe, you know, we may be wrong, but we are reading the bylaws. The counsel to the board has read and agreed with the position that we're taking, that there is a violation likely going on, which is that they are proceeding with an improvement, that's why they're having to be in front of you, it's an improvement. According to our bylaws, any additions, alterations, or improvements costing in excess of $2,500 shall require the approval of the majority of unit owners. That's what our bylaw requires. This board has skipped that step. They have decided that it is unnecessary to have the approval of the unit owners or to abide by our bylaws. So, we're just putting that in front of you and requesting that any approval that you might subsequently make, I understand it won't be tonight, should have a provision that they obtain the approval of two-thirds of the owners, as are bylaws approved by the state, required by the state mandates, be respected.
It's not two-thirds, it was one-half.
I'd like to answer this.
Here it is. Shall be approved by a majority, it's a majority, okay, I'm sorry about that, a majority of unit owners. I can provide you with a copy of it.
Yeah, if you would, that would help, yeah.
So we are making that request, that this be a condition of your, because otherwise, this is an illegal action, as far as we're concerned.
Then I...
Thank you.
And I don't think that issue has anything to do with the planning board. There's not a planning issue. If there's any issue that we solve in court, I don't think it should influence your decision as planners, one way or another, because it's improperly placed.
So noted. Okay. Anybody else have any input before I call for continuation of the public hearing? Now move again. Does anybody have a move to public hearing to March meeting?
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
Rich, is this going to be moved until the March 4th or March 18th?
March 18th, because we won't have it back from the county until then. It's a good day, right after St. Patrick's Day. It's a good day for a meeting. Okay, everyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All do I do with the coffee, you know, just...
Yeah, just leave it here.
I'll come in and give you a coffee.
Okay, tomorrow.
Clearing place? I'm clearing the place. Actually, neither of you are talking. I'm excited. I know you do it. Do you know that we're coming?
No.
No idea.
No, I had no idea.
Yes. I would think so. We'll let George try to set the guess. The applicant...
The applicant wasn't the owner, if you have a problem.
Don't make a problem, but if it was legitimately the owner, applicant.
No, we should have George look at the lead dad, if necessary, look at the video.
Join us?
I'd love to.
Great.
This is the talk about Rockin' Snow, which is going to do a new construction at 28 Main Street, currently a vacant lot. Formerly Delia Shaw's house, it's out here.
Formerly the what?
Delia Shaw.
Hey, there was a building there.
I used to mow her lawn for 50 cents an hour. It's made me an entrepreneur. I'll tell you this, I used to get 50 cents for mowing it. One Saturday, I didn't want to do it, my father made me go do it. I literally ran with the lawnmower, did it in half the time, and she paid me half the amount of money. Then on, a few basis from then on, it was hourly working for me.
That's great.
She was a great lady.
Taught you a lesson.
So, I can tell you a number of things that might be relevant, because I've got this from the building department about being upfront and all that stuff. My, the person that designed the building, very thoughtful fellow, wanted me to emphasize that there is a stone wall that rises from sidewalk level, I'd say goes up a maximum of two feet, maybe less, foot and a half, but it's still a wall.
Right. Where, where the dining area?
No, no, this is right on the sidewalk.
Oh, okay, okay.
What, the dining area for that restaurant?
Yeah.
Well, there, it's at ground level, but as you go toward Water Street, as you go west, the wall gets taller. Then there's some steps in the middle of it, and then my wall, if the wall continues, and the wall is actually high when it continues past the steps. This building would be on the left side, but the wall gets much higher. It's probably two and a half, three feet high, till my property line ends. So, because of that wall and ADA, we thought setting it back a little bit. So, you see where the handicap parking is on one of these?
Yes.
Where it's, then people can come down, walk in wheelchair, and get to the entrance easily, rather than having to figure out a way to get to the sidewalk, you know, which would be very difficult from the parking lot, actually.
But will there be handicapped access from the sidewalk?
Yes. There will, from, remember, again, it goes down to...
To zero.
To zero, on my property, right near where the restaurant has its outdoor seating right now, which is an area where I actually have a right of way. So this is one consideration, you know, I hope I don't have to go to the zoning board of appeals to set it back another sidewalk, or a little more, he thought maybe four to eight feet back. The less I set it back, the happier I am, because parking is such an issue, I'd hate to lose, you know, any spaces in the Village of New Pulse.
Correct.
Parking is such, so critical.
The curb cut that's indicated on the copy that you just gave us this evening to your adjoining owner...
Yes.
Is that an existing one, or is that a...
That's an existing curb cut, of which I have a right of way, but I don't, I don't envision, I don't see it easing up traffic at all. I still think, you know, everyone that comes into my shop, or to the restaurants, or whatever, has been going on Wertz Avenue and up that drive. You know, that this is a very tight, this is an old, old-fashioned curb cut, it's very small, it's very close to the building, the existing building, where Huguenard Restaurant is. And, also, they have their outdoor seating there, I've given, I've just had a verbal agreement that I can take it back anytime from the owner, if I need that. But I don't think that that would help traffic flow any more than people having to wait to turn onto Wertz. You know, it would just give an additional place where it could bottleneck a little.
No, if anything, a safer exit, is that the intersection?
Is it the intersection, yeah. People can actually get around there. It's questionable whether someone could get around, the road might widen a hair around Wertz Avenue, and it might be a hair an hour, I'm not 100% sure on that. So, other things that you might be interested in me talking to you about are, you might say, well, why am I not going covering up more of the frontage? Why is the building going lengthwise down? And, the reasoning there is, my friends at the bike shop at the Bicycle Depot have interest in also building it, it would be a very compatible, this other use in my lot, we haven't worked things out, they don't have the money. I'm running out of time, and they're trying to accumulate less debt, and so, you know, we might work something out in the future. We might not. I have to see also, a nice thing about my incrementally working things out is that I get to see the impacts of, like, do I need all that parking, you know? And if I do, you know, then it won't happen.
But what's the square footage on the store?
The square footage on the store, that we want...
Is it still the same?
No, it's, there's a new, there should be a new floor plan in here.
1,200 square feet?
Yes.
One story?
It's going to be two stories, storage on the second floor.
Is it 600, 600, 1,200 each floor?
You know, it's not 1,200 on the second floor because of the roof pitch, really. You know, it's not, if you were a mouse, it would be the same, but if you were an adult, you'd lose quite a lot of the space. We want a lot of storage, we have a lot of rental equipment that's used in the winter, cross-country skis and snowshoes, and also, our internet business is growing, so boxing things up and receiving things is good. As is, you might wonder why I want two stores, why am I not building a big store? Also, as I pointed out, I'm a very conservative person, business-wise, and I've noticed the psychological advantage of having the current annex, that we have, you know, used things there, and separating the two is good. I mean, this is going to be more expensive for me in the short run, there's going to be more computer expense and personnel, I'll be hiring more people by having a second place. But it also, it separates them nicely, and if one doesn't work, I can sell it, you know? In my industry, my friends have been warning me for decades that some of the biggest success small retailers they've had failed when they went big. So, in this instance, some of the most astute people that I've talked to have said, you know, this is a pretty good idea, because you're not really going big, which I also think is nice for the village. You know, why should there be a giant shop in the village when almost all the shops are fairly small? So this would, I'm going to separate uses, the annex would have used equipment and clothing, and we're also thinking about moving our cross-country ski, retail, and rental, and running shoes. We've got into running since Peak Performance left, we're doing that more, and we have a well-known runner on our staff, and we want to move sort of the fast-forward things there, so it'll be a little more like Peak Performance. I don't know if that's probably not of the interest of yours, what's going on, but, you know, I just want you to know my thought process on all of this. So it's modest growth, but, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, and I've owned this lot for a long time, and it's done nothing but cost me. So now it's time to figure out a way to make it not only pay for me, but pay more taxes and help the village a little bit, if that's, I'm sure that would happen.
So the application has one business, 2,040 square feet, is really going to be 1,200?
Oh, I mean, on this thing? Yeah, yeah, we shrunk it. I have a budget. There's only so much rent Rockin' Snow can pay, and I've learned that over time, I haven't had a raise in 10 years. I know exactly what the store can conservatively afford, and in the annex, one of the great things, as I might have mentioned before you came in, Michael, is how much rent I'm already paying.
Right.
So I feel like if I can triple the space at least, and only pay one-third more in rent, I'm pretty sure the business can handle that. But, you know, in terms of going bigger, putting apartments, these are very risky ventures, as much as the village might need more housing, I have to really stick with what I'm an expert at, and what I think we can afford. You know, I can't make mistakes at this age, and my wife is going to be my partner on the building, so I don't want to jeopardize any of that.
It's very similar in design to the current Rockin' Snow.
It is somewhat similar.
Are there similar materials being used, or...
Yes, yes, split block, different colors, no colored bands. What attracted me, when I gave this project to the person that designed it, I was very gratified, because the first person that saw this drawing said, "That looks like that", and I said, "That's exactly what I wanted it to look like." And that's an old firehouse. So it's going to be very different in that the windows on the big, sort of garage door looking thing, the windows, unlike the current building, are going to go all the way down. So it's going to look like a garage kind of thing, like for a firehouse. And, this is a Dutch, you know, treatment of the roof line, it'll be a metal roof instead of shingles. We're looking at radiant heat, and geothermal, perhaps? I just have to see, you know, I'm trying to do this for, I'd say 450, if it goes to five, I can still swing it, but I can't swing anything above that, it won't work. So, you know, I'm not 100% sure of the building materials, other than, you know, gray split block, and then maybe red. I don't know if they make like engineer brick, you know, things that are smaller than block, but bigger than brick, that you used to see on buildings like firehouses and schools. I don't know what kind of materials are available, we'll look into that further. We're also thinking about doing a steel, maybe a pre-fabricated steel inside, so then the walls wouldn't be load-bearing, and we'd put more insulation than we certainly currently have, because utilities are pretty, pretty steep. And, you don't know, there's no chance of natural gas, and...
I haven't heard in bringing it down Main Street yet, I don't have a few years or four yet, so...
You know, we all know where that might come from, so, that's the big deal. So that's, you know, we have some light coming in, I'm going to avoid skylights, but we have light coming in on the sides, and that's higher than the walls, you know, for display purposes. We need to have wall space, like we do in the current store, so those will be taking the place of skylights to a certain degree, and... The lentils won't be real stone, they're these things that you fill with concrete, but they still look good, and they're strong, and, you know, trying to make the cost reasonable. And on the steps, on the roof line there, those, I have a problem with the current Rockin' Snow, and we'll try to alleviate that with this one, where these are going to actually have some pitch back toward the metal roof. So things aren't going to drop, drip down, we are trying to avoid things dripping constantly down the facade. Same kind of entryway as Rockin' Snow, you might notice from the previous building, we changed the front window, ground floor window and door, and that's because of when the wall starts and all that. So sidewalk access will be easier, because it'll be at ground level, there won't be wall there. So I'm going to have to place this fairly close to the property on, on the east side of the lot there.
Do, I don't know what the setbacks are for Gateway.
I don't have them from that.
Well, it said like as close to the sidewalk as possible, if not really close, unless you're putting benches and gardenings and stuff.
And that's true on the side as well?
Yeah.
But again, it really would make sense to have, and I, you know, not that I, it's not desirable for me in particular, but for handicap, I don't want people, I want handicap people to really be able to access the front of the building.
Yeah.
And also access the normal sidewalk as easily as possible, because, you know, there's steps at this point. We do, we built a few years ago, because it was always mud, we built a sidewalk going to the parking lot, you know, that would be covered by the building. But this would be another alternative, coming beside the building, and then in front of the building, and to the area where it's at the same level as the real sidewalk.
So I like both layouts. I'm curious, what was the impetus for bringing the building to the street, as opposed to...
Well, because of what was asked for by the code.
I see.
He decided that we do it both ways, if you'd like to see it both ways, but he really, is very astute, and I was glad he brought it up, that for handicap access, it would be nice, a little bit of distance.
It has its advantages.
And also, I might have to put up a tiny, not tiny, but an aesthetic fence, possibly, right in the bluestone of the wall, because where you first come around, you know, the wall will be...
For safety.
Probably, you know, about, again, about a foot and a half.
Okay.
So that might be not only required, but it might be aesthetic, and, you know, you don't want somebody stepping off the wall on the sidewalk. As is, a few years ago, I was parked in my lot there, and I came out of the store, I think it was the early evening, and I go, boy, what was I thinking when I drove up this morning? That's the worst parked job I've ever seen. I opened my door in a locked car, and there was a note on my steering wheel from a police officer, said, "Call me." And I hadn't noticed that some guy had supposedly gotten his flip-flops stuck... As is, a few years ago, I was parked in my lot there. And I came out of the store, I think it was the early evening. And I go, "Boy, what was I thinking when I drove up this morning? That's the worst parked job I've ever seen." And opened my door in a locked car. And there was a note on my steering wheel from a police officer. He said, "Call me." And I hadn't noticed that some guy had supposedly gotten his flip-flops stuck with his gas pedal and was backing into a space and went over the wall where it was this high, blew out two of his tires and hit my car. And thank God, you know, no one was walking on the sidewalk at the time. But, so I didn't park it wrong. It moved. Somebody moved my car.
Yeah, no, that's... And the entire lot, Rich, is yours? This whole lot?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So we'll be able to park it, should not be.
I tend to believe, I have a couple of bids out for getting a topographical survey as well as re-establishing. It's going to cost me extra. And when you sell, the buyer's supposed to do this. But I think for my peace of mind, for my family and everything, I'm going to also have the, even though there's some stone markers, the front is not well-marked. So I'm going to also pay for the, what would you call it?
Monuments.
Monument survey as well as a topographical survey, which you all are going to need, you know, showing the pitch, which way water is going to go, et cetera, et cetera.
Are you going to block top the lot?
Well, the lot is block topped.
It is?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that lot is. That's the farmer's market is.
I've spent tons of money sealing and black topping.
Will there be any change? Do you anticipate any change in the topography of your, of your present parking lot? So when you build it, you're going to build it to existing ground level?
Yeah. You know, the building's not going to be like this. It's going to be cut in a little, so it's level. But we're not going to change the topography at all.
So the drainage will basically remain unchanged?
Yes.
Other than what's eliminated because of the footprint of the building?
Yeah, it might be a little better. Because right now, I notice a lot of it goes into the existing, there is a drain there. But some of it comes, there's a bicycle rack in the corner. And I see when it's really raining a lot. Some comes onto, it actually comes out that right-of-way at the restaurant. And it gets pretty wet there. And I'd like to alleviate that if possible. Because I noticed that's one of the biggest serious problems, I think, in the village. Is the drainage on buildings and bad gutters. Things aren't really hooked to the stormwater thing. And elderly people, you know, sidewalks, they're at an angle and they get covered with ice. You don't even need snow. You just need cold weather and water pours out onto the sidewalk. So I'd like to do a better job, you know? Or at least a good job, you know? Because those things originally probably did all right. But, you know, so, we all know.
So the building will, you'll, obviously, when you file a complete application, you'll have full site plans and...
Yes.
Whoever's working with you sounds like they know the code. But they should be sure to look at the supplementary requirements, which in our code is 21223A. So if you want to, actually, the whole section 21223 would be...
I forgot, I forgot.
They can look at...
212-23?
Yeah, that'll, that gives all the information you'll need in terms of supplementary requirements over and above the Gateway District.
Yeah.
And they can review.
So what do you think about this little, small setback? Do I need to, is that a ZBA thing?
I was going to ask you to do that tonight. Because I love the old one. I like the idea of having the Main Street building to be on the side.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think that's...
No, no, but I mean, but having it set back enough for a second sidewalk kind of thing. For handicapped.
I don't see how else you're going to do it. Otherwise, you're going to have to remove that wall and...
They'd have to go around the building the other way, right next to the seating at the restaurant. You know?
Well, that sounds more humble something.
And it would be further, a further distance for them, I think.
So what you're, so if I understand this, the place where this, what you've referred to as concrete walkway meets, this is roughly where the existing sidewalk that you built is, right? The blacktop?
Yes, 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 indeed.
So it's the same opening? And then you've just reconfigured it? So you've got a walkway?
Yeah, so people can come right there.
I mean, I would...
Or right to the sidewalk.
And so that distance, what is this standard sidewalk, which is what, five feet?
Approximately, yeah, that sounds about right.
I mean, personally, I would be in favor of that design for your building, but also because people are accustomed to sort of using this as a diagonal through. And if you take that away, then people will find another way to do it. They'll just be climbing over the wall. So I think it's preferable. And aesthetically, I don't think it's a problem to have it set back. I mean, the scale of your building and the new building are such that actually setting it back has some advantages as well. Because you've got these buildings that are, have a relationship to one another. But they're quite different in size. So this may actually be, I think it's fine.
And the cost over building is set back.
Yeah.
Quite a lot.
More than this would be.
Yes, much more.
You should be sure, whatever, when you bring in site plan, also if you have information about a sign, you might as well include that at that point. We'll review that.
I think I'll use the sign that was stolen, that I recovered, paid for to get back.
Whatever.
You ever hear, you hear about that? Thousand-dollar sign. Ended up in somebody's apartment. And then I, through channels, I know who has it, but it'll cost you. And I got it back and it's, I haven't put it up because it would take, you know, a much more formidable setting. But that sign is still very viable.
Well, you can photograph it. That would be great.
It would be a swinging sign.
We're going to be concerned with the exterior lighting.
Of course. Very important.
Dumpster on your site plan, make sure you show that in the enclosure for it.
Yes.
Our attorney's going to want to see the rights-of-way access to make sure that's, you know, goes with the property forever.
You had, when your previous plan, you had a loading area. You don't show that to us?
Yeah, but we, the person that designed it, he's fresh. And when he talked to somebody that was an established builder, the guy was like, "Too many square feet. You're never going to get to that, you know, those dollar amounts. Shrink it." I put that in there as a, because I thought that it could be a garage. I could keep a Kubota in there and do my own plowing. But it also was one of those fallback positions where it could eventually become a kitchen. And we had it where there'd be an entrance and an exit into the kitchen and all that. You know, to think that way and at that expense, to think of failure, you know, to spend more money in anticipation of a failure. So it could be a restaurant after that. It was too expensive. And it might not be the great way to think. You know, the way to think is to think positively. You know, I came into this, it was a part-time job that I started in because I needed a little gas money. And then I became a manager. And then I became a partner. And then I became the owner. And since I've been the owner, we've never gotten into any financial difficulties. And we've always been able to support the community more than adequately. Well, I won't say that. That's not my, that's not for me to say. But I felt very, very good being able to give money to the preserve and the rescue squad. You know, so I feel like, and my staff is often very loyal. Alumni that come back and they don't come back to throw a rock in the window. They come back to say, "Hi, let's go to dinner." And I just, I feel like I see everything as a circle. And I'm not at the center. I'm not the hub. I'm just another one along the circle to pass everything around, so it's all good.
So I'm sorry to be mundane.
No.
So the loading, so your idea is then that this building will be, in terms of materials coming in, or as you said, your internet business, things going out, you'll utilize your existing building as the site where?
Most of the boxes will come in.
Most of the boxes are coming in and out from there?
Yeah. So in that case, you know, I need to talk to him. In that case, we might not have a dumpster and enclosure because right now, we share and I pay, I think I pay for most of it. Between the lawyers and Rock and Snow, there's a fenced-in area. And there's a number of containers. That's where we put our cardboard and stuff, I mean.
All right, so we'll just need to know that there's sufficient space existing or that's an expandable space and that you would indicate that you'd add a dumpster there or something like that.
With consignment, the stuff doesn't come in boxes. We carry it in. And we've been using boxes. It's amazing how few boxes we throw out now because our internet business has been thriving. We're spending more money on Google and stuff. So every box that comes in is a potential box to go out.
That's fine.
Which is a very nice thing for a number of reasons.
All right, if we're going to be removing that maple tree though, you may want to consider in the site plan where you're going to put another tree.
Yeah, on your plan, show the existing trees, especially the ones that are right on Main Street?
Aren't they on the plan?
Not on the new one, they're not.
There's no...
But on the old one, they are.
Okay. All right, right. It's hard to show it when it's built.
If you were to then indicate existing to be removed, existing to stay and things like that. I suspect that the trees along Main Street within 20 feet of the edge of curb will be of interest to the Shade Tree Commission.
Say that again? What was the last thing? Within?
Within 20 feet of the edge of curb. Any tree that falls within 20 feet of the edge of curb falls under the Shade Tree Commission jurisdiction, so...
Yeah, what, can they thwart me on this whole thing?
I don't think the idea is to thwart anybody. I think the idea is we're all going to see this work.
They'll just, the idea, so it's a matter of making sure that you can replace, if you're going to take out a tree, they'll certainly want a replacement. And so...
And on that location?
Not necessarily.
I mean, on the, in the lot. It's not like I could put a tree somewhere or where...
No, you can't plant a tree in Nebraska or something. You have to, or on the ridge, no.
That was a good movie.
Right. That was a great movie.
Okay.
No, you'll need a landscape plan.
Yeah. But we have some unpaved area in the back. And the trees there are, it's pretty scrubby. And I can definitely landscape that and may, I'm not sure where else. You know, because if they do want to put up the bike shop, right now, there's also a terrible maple tree in the...
The Wells Fargo Bank parking lot?
Well, right.
Right on the lawn.
On the lawn, yes. In my, on my side, it's hollow, it's broken, partway up and then hollow. I actually climbed it. I can't remember why I climbed up in there. For some reason, to take something down. And I looked inside the hollow and somebody had put an alarm clock in there. It was really old and rusty. There were all kinds of things inside the tree. So that one's not long for this world. But maybe something right on the corner? I just want to make sure that whatever it is, it gets to stay, even if somebody builds another building there. I don't want it to interfere with the root system or the... Because root systems, again, extend beyond the canopy.
You said that, and I understand that it's just hypothetical right now, but there might be something else in that parking lot?
Yes.
For the bike shop?
Yes.
Would that be another building?
Yes.
I see, okay.
They might end up owning it. You know, we haven't looked into all these legal things that might be with them where I leased them the land for 99 years. You know, this is as extended as personally as I want to get. But they are friends of mine. They're worried about, you know, the growth of their business and, and they can't grow in their current location much. But they're also very cautious. They want to make sure that they can afford it. Because right now, their rent is pretty low and the building, you know, is almost undertaken. Or can be.
What's your timeframe? You had mentioned when we spoke, but what's your?
What's your timeframe?
Well, no, I mean, it can take a while. But, you know, this project will have to go to the county. It's right on the county road.
Yes. I envision. I wish. If, if ground could be broken sometime next year, I would be amazed. You know, that's because I know, because of the process, not because of financing. But just because I know these things take time.
Okay.
And, you know, summer vacations and this and that. And I don't want to start a building in the winter.
I mean, at this point, I don't see any variance issue that would be needed.
No. No, I don't need it. I'll review the Gateway, but it sounds like you're...
No, they're right here if you want to.
Oh, you have the whole code with you?
Yeah, yeah, it's right here.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I won't do it right now, anyway.
I didn't see any setbacks that we have to worry about.
Okay, and I don't see parking as a significant issue because you have the whole lot.
More than sufficient.
More than enough space there.
No, but we need the breakdown between the retail space and the storage space. Want to give us the breakdown in the square footage?
Okay.
The different parking requirements.
Yeah, it's different parking marks. You've got, you've got them.
And you have no, you're not proposing any new curb cuts for access?
No, no.
That could take you a year.
And there's no impact, right? So the impact...
No, I'm not getting into that.
No, the impact on the, on the state road then is, it makes it much simpler. So lighting, landscaping, you know, drainage, the details, the stormwater will be something that we'll have to have reviewed professionally. So, you know, having good plans that indicate how you're going to manage drainage around the building, whether or not you're putting, digging in, I assume, some kind of foundation or a slab or something?
No, there won't be a basement. We know what happens to basements in downtown New Paltz.
Okay, but...
If you could fit a gondola into the basement door, you might as well bring one down there because it's going to be floating one of these days.
Okay, so, but you'll, presumably, you'll be putting a slab or something?
Yes, oh, yeah, there has to be a, you know, for all friendlies.
So what, you know, the drainage details will have, be something we'll have to have looked at?
Yeah, I'd like to build this, you know, you might have some fear because I say, you know, I have a budget, I'm frugal and all that. But I also have a lot of integrity and want a building to last. I want it to be something that people are proud of. I mean, the current Rock and Snow building won an award. And I'd love for this one to win an award. So, you know, again, the sky isn't the limit, but we'll do the best we can do.
So and you, Rich noted, you'll, we'll need the legal stuff for the rights-of-way.
Yes.
So if you didn't put that down.
Absolutely.
I'm not familiar if the Gateway has any requirements about bicycle racks?
That's a village-wide thing.
Oh, okay.
So...
I'll try to have that.
Do we have that to show?
I want to have bicycle...
Yeah, so you should indicate on the plans where you'd like to have a bicycle rack available as well as, you know, automobile parking. That's, and, you know, have, just read through the Gateway and this, as I said, the 21223 carefully and have your professional look through that.
It's not heavy reading. It's a pretty easy outline.
And a lot of it won't be applicable, so. And that, that should be it. Then you can submit a full application.
Oh, and the existing landscaping versus proposed?
Yeah.
Yeah, there should be a undeveloped, a page that shows undeveloped with the existing landscaping.
Okay.
So we know what's...
I'll get my wife on that right away. Nothing like having a little bit of wholesale going on there.
Good.
Well, I thank you all for spending the time with me and...
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, it's great.
You know, I'm one of those people that contains my excitement, but it builds over time. This is the first inkling that, wow.
Yeah.
Holy smokes. Yeah, I hope so.
Thanks, Rich.
All right, well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Richard.
I appreciate it.
Now, of course, adoption of the planning board minutes? Are we ready to go on those or want to hold until next time? This is the first time looking at them, by the way, the minutes.
From last week, from last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't looked at them yet.
So let's hold, let's hold for the next meeting. And the other business?
I have a store full of those.
Let me just bring up something that is of interest to me. I went to the ZBA meeting. I'm not going to talk about Gateway. No floodplains, if you...
Is this part of the meeting or do we want to close?
No, 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 no. No, 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 we wanna, we wanna hit the meeting open, we can't discuss it otherwise.
Okay.
Oh, I do have one half a question. In terms of the Shade Tree Commission, when should I be addressing them? Prior to normal?
No, I would wait until you have a landscape plan that you can show them.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we can, yeah, or we'll pass them when we come to the meeting or something.
Sorry, Andrew.
No, that's fine, that's a good question.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity to go to the ZBA meeting the other night. And there was an application for somebody with a subdivision who had problems with setbacks. And this builder will have problems on multiple numbers of lots in this subdivision with setbacks. The subdivision, I used to own the subdivision, I designed the subdivision, but since my ownership, the town or the village changed the zoning and precluded it from being lots that could take two-family houses to lots that take, single-family only, took it to R1, which changed the setbacks. The builder's now having difficult times making houses fit on these lots because of those new setbacks. But he owns multiple lots. One, it was my feeling that applications like that should be coming to us to take a look at before they go directly to the ZBA, 'cause otherwise he's gonna have to piecemeal in every lot and make every lot work every time. Whereas I think we should look at this thing as a whole, as a whole.
As the remains of a subdivision and.
I mean, one of the little things in the law is that if you have a lot that doesn't meet and needs a ZBA, and one of the reasons is because of setbacks or not enough land, but you own adjoining land, you're gonna use the adjoining land as opposed to just getting a variance. So which also suddenly this back could be losing lots.
Right.
I mean, was not, was never the intention of that change to begin with, the intention when they changed zoning was to keep two-family houses out of that neighborhood and make the single-family houses the accessory apartments. But somehow this little slipped through, that on.
But since the subdivision was created under the old rules, wouldn't they be grandfathered in for those particular lots?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. I mean, you know, that's the beauty of owning real estate. We call it windfalls and white paths in the business. When zoning changes, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose.
Right.
Sometimes your land becomes worth more, sometimes your land becomes worth less. In this case, this land was affected in a way that. I really firmly believe was not, I mean, I was there, I helped argue, because this subdivision was my baby, I did not wanna see it become all two-family houses, which is what the developer at that time wanted to do, and we fought him, we got the zoning change that stopped it. But nobody saw this coming. All of a sudden, we're taking a look, now the current developer happened to come in and lot by lot basis, get ZBA approvals for every house he builds from now on.
So, but the subdivision was approved.
It's an approved subdivision.
Doesn't mean the houses were approved.
No, no, but.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean you can't build the houses 11 feet wide.
Yeah, the houses still have to abide by the building code and, and I would argue without being certain that they have to abide by the current zoning code.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's what typically, that in my past experience, that's what typically happens, if the zoning changes, that's what, the rules you have to follow. So, so was there action?
Well, that's why the building inspectors sent them on this one particular lot where they came for a building.
No, I mean, did the ZBA take action?
No, ZBA did nothing.
I have to go to the county, so we're waiting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm hearing, I think, I'm sure at least, that you're, you think that there's a flaw in the current zoning or in the procedures that would lead a developer to go to the ZBA and not come to the planning board, is that what that is?
Well, the problem is really kind of multifaceted in that generally someone goes to the ZBA who has setback problems or area problems.
Yes.
Because they own a single lot, and there's nothing they can do with that lot unless they're granted a variance.
Yes.
But this is a unique situation, this is someone who owns multiple lots, contiguous multiple lots. Which all of a sudden puts the ZBA in a position of not being able to grant a variance technically, because he has an alternative method of building on those lands.
Oh, okay.
That's the problem.
So you're saying that instead of doing a lot line revision and possibly losing buildable lots to, he would, he would end up losing lots to fulfill the building restriction line?
Right. Or would be coming to the ZBA every time.
Yeah, he would need a variance on every single lot, every time there was a proposal to build.
But can he come to the ZBA and ask for a blanket variance on all of them?
I don't believe so, I'm not an attorney, but I don't believe so. I believe that the ZBA acts on a specific problem, on a specific lot.
So would he come to us for, to propose that?
Can I ask the obvious, why doesn't he just do, he has to lose lots?
'Cause at least he has to lose money.
Well, that's not necessary.
I'm not, I mean, I'm very familiar with the subdivision design, obviously, 'cause I designed it. I'm not even so sure that's really going to solve all of his problems.
Well, what are the other facets of his problems, other than, than building restriction lines?
It's the placement of these houses on the lots with those restriction lines. But I mean, I just don't think it's as easy as adding lots side by side together is gonna solve it. Because you got front line, rear line, as well as sideline setbacks.
How many lots are we talking about?
I'm not sure. I'm gonna guess, just, for memory.
Well, I, I.
10, 15?
Okay, so a fair, fair number.
Not one or two.
I don't think that somebody coming for saying, gee, I can't afford to do this, is something that's our concern.
No, and he's not doing that, he's coming in as a building inspector, as Adam do, and that is.
No, I mean, as a general, not just this person, but to me, a developer coming in saying, I can't afford to abide by the rules, just.
Yeah, you know.
Isn't a legitimate excuse in my book.
And this may be the developer and me coming out, but you've got me on the board, and that's what I am.
Well, and.
Saying that, you know, the, the subdivision that was there worked beautiful. It functions very nicely, it's a good-looking subdivision, it lays out fine. The restrictions that were put on these lots were put on as a stop gate against a use that we didn't wanna see happen there. It wasn't meant to stop single-family home development. These are some of the nicest homes we have in the village, being built there are single-family homes with the ability to have accessory apartments. So it's a beautiful subdivision, it lays out. And all of a sudden, it's no longer working because we, as planners, or as the village board, tried to stop one use, we created this problem.
And you shot yourself in the foot.
Shot in the foot, probably both feet. The gun went off in my pants.
Just 'cause it went from R2 to R1, you mean?
Right. If it had stayed as R2, the lots are big enough that they could have qualified for two-family.
And why would it change to R1?
'Cause they were lots that were big enough to be two-family. We went to an R1, the lot size made it, single-family the only use you could put the lot to.
But then the building restriction lines bit you in the butt, I mean.
No one, no one took a look at the setbacks, that I can remember. I don't ever remember that being an issue, I don't ever remember, and it probably at the time should have. When that subdivision was, was approved, I had to show a building envelope for every house I proposed, to show that you could fit houses on those lots.
Yeah, so what about.
But when the zoning change went through, I don't think that was done, or you would've seen it, you would've had houses.
That wouldn't fit.
Was it 11 feet wide or something that could build on there?
Oh, yes.
Some ridiculous number.
Yeah, it wasn't even as big as, big as the term I remember Dave walking and saying, this is not livable.
Oh, in terms of the actual allowable width, because of setbacks on the size.
Right. When he took the front, the back, and saw setbacks.
The buildable envelope shrank considerably.
Because R1 was meant for bigger lots.
Right.
It was designed as an R2 subdivision.
Could they go for a zoning change?
That's difficult, I don't know where this is.
You know, well, let me say something, how difficult it is to change zoning in this town. So I bring up floodplain?
Rich, where is this? Right behind Town Hall.
Right behind Town Hall.
Right behind, that's what I thought.
I mean, I built the first 18 houses going up that street, no problems with the setbacks. He built on a couple of the bigger lots up on top, no problem that were bigger lots.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, we're getting back down to the other, to the normal-sized lots, and all of a sudden, rrrr. Up, when we did the up, the west, the east part of the subdivision had much bigger lots across the way it laid out.
I mean, the pot, if those, if we're talking about the area around Taylor or whatever.
Yeah.
It is contiguous with an R2, so it's not out of the question that they could request a zoning change.
But to go to R2.
And then what happens to the.
Now, the way to handle that is to go to an R2 if the builder agrees to put a deed restriction on those two-family houses.
Right. Yeah.
Since he owns them all.
Right.
If I was a builder, I'd rather do that than lose a lot.
Yeah.
If I have no intention of building two families anyway.
Yeah, so.
But something's gotta be changed there, or he's gonna become, I mean, this gentleman giving the presentation used the word site plan five times before I couldn't sit still anymore. I kept thinking, why are you putting a site plan in front of a ZBA? They're not there for a site plan.
Sounds like the zoning change is, is most, it sounds like it's a thing that would work or be the easiest for me.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm just, I know where some of these lots are, and they would be contiguous to the R2 I'm looking at. I don't know if they all are, I mean, if they're not contiguous, it's unlikely that you'll be able to get a zoning change, but that makes it feasible. And with that restriction, then it doesn't change the complexion of that neighborhood.
Of the neighborhood, yeah.
So.
Now, again, why did they change from R2 to R1?
Because under R2, even the smaller slots in there would've qualified for a two-family home.
Would have.
Would have.
And they wanted to avoid allowing it to.
Right. When we built the subdivision, we had, we had anticipated higher, nicer homes. So the lots were bigger, and the cost of the infrastructure was so high, it laid out that way. After I got rid of the subdivision, the next developer in came in with a plan for two families, and we all went, you can't put two families on those lots. Yes, we can, the zoning, and we had never even thought of it.
So you changed it to prevent the two families, but in, but in doing that, then he.
Shot himself in the foot.
He, he's hung by the fact that the square footage of the building envelope.
Has gotten much smaller.
Has to be much smaller in order to comply with setbacks.
Correct.
But he can't build a home that is livable and saleable.
On with existing setbacks.
With the small envelope, so now he's got to either get permission to change the zoning so they can have the larger one, or he's going to have to reconfigure the lots, and give up some lot in order to gain the total.
Yeah.
Square footage to become larger, or.
Go for a variance.
Go for variance on each individual.
Lot one, as he goes to build it.
That's part of the way the law is written now.
And, and, and one of the things the law says is that if you own land contiguous to the plot that you're trying to get relief on.
Then you have to, you're required to?
They're kind of forcing you to resubdivide.
If I own two undersized lots next door to each other.
Yeah.
And go to build on them, I will have a rude awakening finding out that I will be joining those lots before the end of the day. I can't just go and get ZBA rulings on this one, leaving this one vacant, and it's like, oof.
But there's a history.
So what you do is you put one in your name, one in your wife's name, and then when you get, that's the way you get around it, that's the way the developers do it. But in this case, this is, this guy's upfront, I mean, I was very impressed with his, the builder he sent in, very nice guy. Came right upfront with his problem, and my thought was, it's gonna be easier to solve this at our level.
Right.
Than to try to run around every time on these lots and do this until somebody realizes that the ZBA shouldn't even be doing it.
So what we need to do to resolve?
We need to make a recommendation to his board, either for a zoning change to R2, but I would do that if the builder was willing to, with the provision that the builder put a deed restriction on those lots, that they were not to be two-family homes.
But he has to come to the board to request that?
Well, I don't know. You know, this is where the same problem I have with down here.
What's that, what's that?
Can an individual do it, can a board do it?
I mean, isn't it a George question?
I mean, if we know that this problem's coming down the road.
Yeah, I mean, argue, I don't know, and we probably should ask George, I mean, it would be nice to think that the planning board could be proactive about planning stuff and not. So, but I should add something, unless I'm mistaken, this has been R1 for some time, and, right, we're talking about the. And the current owner of the property bought the land when it was R1, and.
Oh, he bought it when it was R1, oh.
And actually was, bought it from some, he wasn't even, there have been multiple developers at this, when this, this subdivision goes back well over 20 years. And a previous developer, the person that this current one bought it from, actually had to go in front of the planning board at the time for a site plan revision because the stormwater regulations had changed so significantly over the years that one of the lots had to be taken out as a building lot and turned into a detention area. And so the lots in this area that we're now talking about were reconfigured by the previous developer to the, the one just before the current owner. So this developer bought this with fully aware, or it needed to be, I mean, it's their responsibility to be fully aware of what they were purchasing in terms of a subdivision and what the rules, what the ground rules were.
The problem is if you change everything that's now R1 there to R2, it doesn't mean that the current existing houses would be willing to put deed restrictions on.
I wouldn't change the entire thing, I would only change.
Was contiguous?
And I'm not even convinced that I would go along with this idea, I'm just saying it's an idea, that those lots that are currently unbuilt, undeveloped, that are contiguous with, with R2 might be worth looking at as a, would it make sense to convert those back to R2 with the condition that you imposed? I wouldn't consider changing the whole.
Okay.
That would be very complicated, and I see no reason.
Just the ones that are not built upon yet, but are.
Well, I guess the reason they brought it to our board is, do we discuss this, does it go with Tom's board to discuss this? Do we leave it with the ZBA?
I think it's, I still think it's a George question.
I have another question, which is, why didn't, sorry, Tom, I just, it used to be that everything came to us before it went to the ZBA.
Oh, no, don't, yeah, that's.
And this seems like a real source.
And there were some cases where that didn't make sense, but this one really.
This one really makes sense.
So, that's my earlier questions.
Yeah.
To address Michael's question. It seems to me we have two issues, one, you go to George and get George's opinion about whether you can build, whether you can't build. But we're also talking about a procedural issue here. Should this have gone to the ZBA at all without having come to the planning board? Do we have a failure in our code, which would not be shocking to any of us, we know the code is way out of date, out of whack. Do we have a particular recommendation that we wanna make that resolves that issue? So that people aren't circumventing the judgment of the planning board in inappropriate ways? I would say that you don't need to go to George for that, unless you want George to help you in writing up what you're recommending to the, to the board to change in the code.
Well, are they purposely circumventing, or is it something where they know by default that they're going to have to go to the ZBA, so they're just bypassing us, knowing what the answer's gonna be?
I believe they were sent to the ZBA.
Sent to the.
Because that's what they, that's what was needed, because we can approve it.
Who sent it?
If they, if they were there for, two families have, we have site plan approval on two families.
So the building department sent them to the ZBA, so the building department circumvented the planning board?
They may be unaware, the building department might be unaware that.
I mean, is there something that says that?
Like Michael said, in most cases, it's not a problem, you know, somebody's got a garage that's got a little encroachment problem or something, you know. We may not wanna see it, may go right straight to the ZBA, but something like this is not. Might go right straight to the ZBA, but something like this is not a ZBA issue in that this is a multi-lot issue. It's not a single lot issue.
It's more into a site plan.
So, should we, should we try to make a recommendation that the building department run each of these issues by us before telling the applicant to go to the ZBA?
Well, it's certainly going to slow some applicants down.
Well, I know, but I mean, it may be something, a quicker view is to say, needs to go to the ZBA, you know, where Mark is, or someone might be able, an individual may be able to look at it.
Right.
As opposed to having to wait two weeks, but because if it's just a single individual problem of a small setback.
I'm the new planner.
Oh, you're our new planner? Wow!
I'm Brenda White.
Hi, Brenda.
Wow, Brenda.
I was wondering why you were here.
I, I came to meet you all, so this might be a good time to introduce myself, saying, hey, that's probably my job. So, maybe then we need to figure out where you want me to send things to you, and where you want me to send things directly to the ZBA, because I think that that's going to fall into my lap.
Boy, you're dead, and boy, we lucked out.
Yeah, that's great.
My goodness.
I thought you were the press, I was thinking, oh, she's running down.
I have the paper.
I thought you were a neighbor of this...
Wow, okay.
That's great.
Let's hash this out.
This is Brenda's...
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Brenda's first full day.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
Here she is.
We called him a better late than never Tom.
Yes.
Well, so, this sort of makes my comment moot, but I was going to say, rather than make a recommendation, we should talk to the building inspector who had been doing this, but...
Why would we talk to the planner?
But if this is now going to become your responsibility, yeah.
I think it is, yes.
I, I think that some of it may be a matter of culture and communication rather than a failure of our code or something. I think in the past, the building inspectors just said it has to go to the planning board, and everything went to the planning board that was a ZBA recommendation. And maybe different building inspectors have a, a different approach based on where they came from, so, I think we just need to find a way to, at least for starters, find a way for this board and you, your office, to communicate more frequently and stuff like this.